I call this meeting of the Jackson Public School District Board of Trustees to order. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Thomas?
I would like to introduce Mr. Isaiah Ashton Young. Isaiah is the 11-year-old son of Howard and Helen Young. He's a fifth grade student at Marshall Elementary School. Isaiah has perfect attendance and proudly serves on the school's safety patrol and the school's student leadership council. Most recently, he placed a second place in the district's reading fair. Isaiah's favorite school subjects are reading and science. Some of his hobbies include playing with his iPad and watching his favorite episodes of Wild Kratts. He enjoys Sunday School and Children's Church. He inspires to one day become a tech-savvy IT director just like his father. In the meantime, Isaiah really enjoys reading all the books from the series of Captain Underpants and attending school daily.
Good evening. Would you please stand and recite your Pledge of Allegiance? Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a vote for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and just for all. You may be seated.
Thank you so much, Isaiah. We have a presentation for you. Next, I'd like to introduce Ronnie C. Crudup Jr., who will provide our moment of inspiration. Mr. Crudup Jr. was born and raised in Jackson. He's a graduate of Murrah High School and Bellhaven University. A committed family man, Ronnie is married to Andrea Crudup, and together they have three children: Naya at Power APAC, Robin at Lester, and David, who will be attending Lester. Ronnie and his family reside in South Jackson where he is Executive Director of New Horizon Ministries Incorporated. But he does so much more for his community. He has been on numerous boards and advisory councils in the city. Ronnie's main concern is about the well-being of residents in Jackson and the entire state of Mississippi. He believes that we can make tremendous impact when we put our heads and resources together for the greater good. Ronnie loves to run, bike, and swim in his free time. He has run three full marathons and a number of other races. He believes that God has curated us all with unique gifts to be used for bettering the world. He shared his favorite quote from Henry Ford: "Coming together is the beginning; staying together is progress; and working together is success." And his favorite scripture from Philippians, the first chapter and the 21st verse: "For me to live is Christ, and to die is gain." Please welcome Ronnie Crudup Jr.
First of all, say good evening to everyone. Just a quick correction, it's Crudup.
Crudup, you know I thought that, and I know your people, so excuse me.
No problem. But once again, good evening, and I won't be long, but for this inspirational moment. As Dr. Merritt called me earlier today, I just wanted to take this time to talk about two things: about remembrance and do not forget. When I say remember, I'm talking about remember the past of JPS what I remember. I remember my years at Chestain and Murrah. Those were some of the best years of my life. I graduated in 1995, and at that point, Murrah was winning a lot of basketball championships. It was a fun time to be a Murrah Mustang at that point. It was an atmosphere of winning and celebrating like none before, and it could not be duplicated. It was something that we really enjoyed being at that school, at that moment. But I also remember the extracurricular activities that I was a part of, like home economics, I was a part of shop class, I was a part of gymnasium, those things that really actually kept me going to school. They really had a lot, big foundation of me from when I learned all those crafts and shop, of how I learned to build things. Actually, so when I got out of school, I actually wanted to get into construction because of that. And so those are the components that really kept me to going to school, and I remember that a lot for my life. But then also, I want to say don't forget. You know, when I say don't forget, let's not forget the least of these. The least of these, those students, these families who really don't have and can't afford to get the things that we all have today. I mean, I know in my family, I'm allowed a lot of things that a lot of people can't do. But I also remember growing up, when I was at Chestain Middle School, when my father was still trying to build the church, and we were struggling to make ends meet, that I didn't have the best jeans and the best shoes and all those things, and I got talked about a whole lot. And so, to this day, I make it my point of still staying involved in the community because I want to make sure that there's someone to speak up for those children who don't have those things that a lot of us are allotted today. So, and I want to encourage us, don't forget the least of these, who really struggle. A lot of parents who can't get to these meetings, who are always having to work two or three jobs. Let's not forget those students. Let's not forget those other kids who may be a little bit mischievous, and they feel like, they seem like they're knuckleheads. Because actually, I was one of those knuckleheads in school. I was one of those mischievous students that got in a lot of trouble. But I also remember those teachers who really stayed on me and encouraged me to finish up my education at school, and which I did. But I also want to tell us to open up our lives to our students and to the families around. One of my young ladies right now, I call her my goddaughter, she graduated, and now she's actually getting her master's degree, doing some graduate work over in Africa. And this past Christmas, while she was here, she's going back now, she left the greatest card and said that she came from a single-parent family, her father wasn't around, and just really struggled a lot. But the card says, you know what, Mr. Ronnie and Ms. Andrea, that's my wife, she says, "I never thought about getting married, I never thought about having children, but for you guys to open up your lives to me has now encouraged me that I want to get married now, that I want to have children now, that I want to do so many other things because we opened up our lives." So I want to encourage the board, I want to encourage other people in this room, open up your lives to these young people. They remember that stuff. They remember the things, a lot of times, my dad had this saying, saying, "Most things are caught and not taught." Make sure that we're allowing our children to catch the right things, not just what we're trying to teach them. So let's make sure that we open up our lives to our students to be able to catch the right things so they can go on further in life. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your very inspirational remarks.
Thank you. Mr. Crudup?
Mr. Crudup? Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mr. Crudup. Let the record show that all of our board members are present, so that we have established a quorum. Item four. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda as printed? My attorney is trying to graciously whisper something to me.
I think you had indicated you might want to add an item to discussion of the RFP for the superintendent consultant search. Do you still want to do that?
I do that. I was just going to announce it there.
Oh, okay.
Is it appropriate?
Yeah, if you just want to announce it.
Right. Thank you. Thank you for that advice. I'll save that for an announcement. Thank you. We had a motion to approve the agenda? Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt the agenda as printed. The reading and approval of the minutes, Ms. Williams circulated the minutes previously, and we've all had a chance to read them. Do I hear a motion to adopt the amendments from the December 19th board meeting?
We didn't vote.
We didn't vote on last time?
No, no, that's what we just talked about. We had that one.
Oh, I'm so sorry, and adopting the agenda? Okay, good to have a good board behind you. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda? It's been moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Do I have a motion to approve the amendments as distributed earlier?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that we approve the amendments as distributed earlier by Ms. Williams. Thank you, Ms. Williams, for your attention to detail. Item five, public particip- Oh, I'm sorry, do I hear a vote for the approval of the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Let the record show, the minutes have been approved after much consternation. Item five, public participation for general comments and/or proposed policy.
Portman, as you have one person who signed up to address you regarding makeup days, Ms. Michelle Henry.
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
Good evening, board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I want to speak on makeup days. Right now, as you know, the city of Jackson is facing a water crisis, and that has spilled over into Jackson Public Schools. And so, we have a few possible solutions as a parent. Take up our inclement weather days, extend our class day beyond the times adding a few minutes every day can help us reach those instructional hours that we need. Extend the school year to the end of May to help make up for those days. Possible Saturday school and digital learning. That would give us the opportunity, especially in our middle schools and our high school levels where they're already using digital learning, to implement that and also get those hours of instructional time. But I did want to specifically stand here as Michelle Henry and say, whatever decision that JPS makes, I will encourage my friends, family, and community to support your plan of implementation. I ask that you do two things for us first, though. One is that you include us, parents, teachers, and students in the process of determining how you're going to do this implementation of the makeup days, and that you communicate that plan of implementation properly. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your remarks, Ms. Henry. That will be taken into consideration.
That's all.
Thank you so much. Item six, a review of our discipline cases. Dr. Bishop Knox?
We have no discipline cases, but I would like to make a note. Last year, at the end of December, we had 321 discipline cases, and at this point, 2017, as of December, we only, we have 250, which is a 71-student decrease from last year. So I think that's to be commended. That speaks to our students, our staff, the work that's happening with the different programs, PBIS, Tools for Life, those things are working, and we're seeing the fruits of that work in the building. So thank you all, to our staff, for that work.
Thank you for that information. Item seven, the superintendent's report and other announcements.
Good evening, and happy new year to those who I've not seen this year. We have just a few announcements. First of all, of course, with our corrective action plan, we'd like to note that we're at a point now where we will bring the corrective action plan to the board tonight for approval. Later tonight, that item is on the agenda. There has been extensive work on the corrective action plan. We've worked in collaboration with MDE, with the Bailey Group, and with others, of course, with our standard leaders, and it's been a lot of work. We think that we have a quality document that will receive approval from MDE, and so again, that item is on the board tonight. Dr. Merritt will come forward just to provide just some updates on the cap, just for informational purposes.
All right. Great evening to Dr. Murray, Dr. Harriston, and school board members. First of all, I do want to thank Dr. Murray and all of the standard leaders who have been working diligently to support the process of making sure that we submit a great comprehensive document to the Mississippi Department of Education. I think we uploaded the last draft to you. It's close to 400 pages, and I did provide, Dr. Murray, the revisions that have taken place, which was basically editorial in nature. We have been working this week, and we've had various meetings. We met with principals all day today as relates to the corrective action plan and the implementation of the corrective action plan. And we do want to note that, and that's what's been underscored, we have good processes in place, but just making sure that we are able to implement them with fidelity. And we underscored, and we do feel that it's there, that we operate with a sense of urgency, and that's been well communicated to all standard leaders, principals, and department heads. As you're all aware of the process, the corrective action plan is due to the Mississippi Department of Education by Tuesday, January 16. Of course, the process from there, they will disseminate the various standards to program offices in which they will review to provide insight if we have to make revisions. It is our understanding that they will send it to, return it to us to make whatever necessary revisions, and hopefully have a state board approval in February. I do want to note, you know, there are some standards that we are concerned about. Standard two, which deals with licensed staff. Standard 20, which deals with the implementation of the instructional management system, as well as standard 28, which deals with the student-teacher ratio, and 17.4 in terms of special education. And the common thread here is having licensed staff in place to carry out the implementation of these standards. And so, we feel that we are providing the support, and staff there doing what's required. But there are some, in some schools, there are some teachers where vacancies exist and limited service staff, we will have some challenges with the implementation. Once school return, we will welcome some new teachers and limited service people in those spaces, and so it's going to be important that we support them in the process. The assistant superintendents have worked, along with Ms. Evans, to put together some Saturday sessions to support teachers, to make sure that they have the necessary support in order to carry out instruction. The other standard that, of course, will somewhat be a challenge is facilities, and you all are aware of our aging facilities and the cost that's associated with doing some of the repairs. But that is a brief update of what has been taking place with the corrective action plan.
Thank you. Is it appropriate for me to ask a question now? A very minor question regarding your timeline?
Yes.
And first, let me say thank you so much. I know we asked your team, Dr. Murray and Dr. Merritt, to provide the board with additional information to help us understand your work in progress, and we appreciate that you did that very well, and it helped us understand where our strengths are and what our timeline is. So I just want to say that to you all, both and your team. My question is, and we appreciate your tentative timeline that you shared as regards when we might clear the standards, is the date that you mentioned, and this is just so I will understand it, is that when you expect to clear or when you expect to ask MDE to visit?
Okay, so the tentative dates that I gave you for review, that's when we will submit the request.
Okay, great.
And to our understanding, and Dr. Murray and I had a conference call with the Office of Accreditation today, they cannot give a specific timeline when someone will come and monitor that standard for clearance, but we will submit the request as stated on the document.
Great. Thank you. That's very helpful. Thank you.
And again, I'd like to again publicly thank Dr. Merritt for his leadership in that he took this task on kind of in the middle of the year and has done a great job. So we appreciate his leadership in this process. So thank you, Dr. Merritt. Next, we, and of course, we had a parent to kind of open this conversation up, but of course, everyone knows that we're having, we have a crisis in the city at this point with our water situation, with the weather pipes and our aging infrastructure, just like we have in our schools, so it's not necessarily a surprise. But we wanted, in the spirit of being transparent and making sure that our board and our parents and our community understands why we're making some of the decisions that we're making, we wanted to provide just a brief update on the situation from facilities and from food service, which are the main areas that cause us to not open schools. So we've asked the facilities executive director, Ms. McCracken, and of course, Ms. Hill will come up and speak as well after Ms. McCracken, but she will come to you to talk about some of the issues that we're having in schools.
I'd like to pass this out for your conclusion. As you receive the information that I've shared with you, this is in reference to all the schools within the school district, and it denotes those schools that have inadequate water pressure. It also denotes those schools that have water pressure and schools that do not have water at all. As stated earlier, the city has experienced over 119 water breaks throughout the entire area. A large portion of damages or repairs are required in South Jackson, which affects the number of our schools. And those are the schools primarily that do not have water. As of January 5th, the school district suffered right at 75% of facilities that did not have adequate or no water. To this date, we're down to 60%. On the 5th, there were 10 schools that did not have water, and now we're down to four. As of yesterday, we had six, so we're taking them off the list of no water to low pressure. The low pressure certainly affects the heating system. It affects, of course, the pressure to use facilities, to flush facilities. 20 pounds is required, pretty much 20 pounds per square inch is required to push water through the system, as well as for domestic water for toilet use. And we've discovered in various schools, we have at least 9%, or excuse me, 9 pounds per square inch, which significantly states that we are not adequate to use facilities. We've looked at different means to address those matters. We've had administrators, as well as our staff, to go out to every school each day from the 5th through today to assess the heating, to assess the toilet pressure, as well as water leaks. We've had a number of water leaks since yesterday, and those have been repaired or being worked on. So it is a situation that we're having to monitor very closely. We've worked closely with the City of Jackson Public Works Director. I just left to meet with the fire marshal to discuss issues with water circulating through the fire system when you have sprinkler system. But fortunately, she said that doesn't affect it as long as we have someone to monitor the fire or to be on fire watch. So we will be putting people in place for that. But at this juncture, it is extremely difficult to use facilities. Schools that were warm last week are now cold. Water's not circulating properly, and the temperatures have dropped in schools. Some have maintained temperatures simply because of the different systems that we have. We have the VAV boxes, we have the fan core units, so all of those different types of systems affect water usage. We are constantly looking to secure water tanks if we choose to go back to school. There are not adequate water tanks here in the City of Jackson or in the vicinity. We've communicated with the department, I mean, Jackson Public Fire Department to seek their assistance with filling different canisters with water so that we can flush, you know, the waste, if you will. But in terms of sanitary issues, that is a challenge for us, and we certainly need your help in order to move forward with that.
Thank you, Mr. McCracken, for that information. I know it's distressing for our families. Jess said it is distressing for us to have to work through these issues.
Ms. Hill, also from food service, I just-
Dr. Murray, Dr. Harriston, board members, good evening. Happy new year. Of course, this has truly been a challenge for us because when you put the City of Jackson under boil-water alert, that hits 60 facilities we have that we're doing some type of food preparation in. So we wanted to be proactive, and the superintendent asked us to look at how it would affect food service. So our food service managers came in on Monday, and of course, our number one, three things that we were looking at, and that was facilities, food, and, excuse me, staff development. When I say facilities, when we do boil-water alert, there are certain things we have to do. We have to make sure the signage is up as far as the health department is concerned, emptying the ice machines, those kinds of things that staff did on Monday, as well as inventory. If we went to school and we were still under boil-water alert, what food items we could actually use. Keeping in mind that we're coming back from the Christmas holidays, and our menus did not reflect, and so we went in looking at, we would do at least three days of sack lunches if we were able to return to our buildings. So we spent a good part of yesterday evaluating inventory, placing orders to come to the schools to be ready, just in case. In many instances, we have very low pressure in water. We were able to get some water to reserve because we do need some in the production side that we could use without actually cooking. So we have obtained as much as we could, but with the slow pressure, not very much was obtained. But we also just reviewed the boil-water, because we do have a procedure in place. We've handled boil-water alerts before, but not to this magnitude. So we wanted to make sure our staff knew what they needed to do whenever we opened our doors. So we pretty much have everything in place, but the water's the issue. But if we get back to where we need to be, we will be able to serve our students wholesome healthy meals without our parents worrying about the mere fact that we are under boil-water alert.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have any questions? I'm sorry, Ms. Hill.
Do we have any realistic projection of when we might be able to be back in school?
Well, again, we can't make a projection. It depends on the water. Again, what we look at is making sure that it's an environment that is conducive to good health and to teaching and learning. And so with that, there is not a number that I could give and say when these number of schools are back online. Again, it depends on a lot of different variables. Water is involved in a lot, but right- Water is involved in a lot, but right now, we have about 40 sites that are involved, and so it's not a manageable situation with that number of schools. So we meet daily. Throughout the weekend, we met and talked about ways to, because ideally, we wanted to go to school. My charge was school Monday. But again, we have to look at the facts, we have to look at the data, and we have to make the decision that's best for our students. And so, again, when it's feasible for us to return, when the conditions are such that we can, we'll make every effort. That's why we're planning, we're planning to return. Cafeteria workers, food service managers, principals in buildings throughout the day is so that we can have an assessment, an on-the-ground assessment in every building throughout the day so we can make an informed decision each day.
Is there any information from the city that could help us anticipate?
Well, again, Mr. McCracken has been working very closely with the city. And let me just, let me just say, you know, some universities, I know they made a decision to do multiple days. Again, the conditions change, you know, and so we're doing a daily assessment because, again, conditions are changing by the day. And so the city communicated to us, I think, on Sunday that, oh, in a 48-hour period, we should see some significant improvement. This is 48 hours later. And so we've seen some improvement, and the city is working very well with us. They're doing a Yoma's job. But again, it's not to a point where, because we can't do some, you know, partial school, you know, for us, we can't send some schools back and others not return. And so it becomes a manageable situation for us, and we're making every effort to put mechanisms in place. When it becomes a manageable situation, we will return to school.
What is the city telling us, Mr. McCracken?
They've dispatched more contractors to help, you know, repair the work throughout the city. They're going to areas where we're mostly affected, where there's schools that do not have water, in my communications with Mr. Miller, so they're looking at that as well. Number of schools that were, that had no water have shifted to low pressure or inadequate. And then there are schools that were in the inadequate column that you have for you have shifted to full water. So there is some progress, but in terms of the manageability of all of those schools, right at 39 to 40 schools, that is the challenge. Not that we can't meet that, but it is a challenge in terms of the logistics of water and also safety with the students.
Thank you. What can the parents and families expect in terms of advance notice? What kind of hours can we give them?
Well, what we've done consistently is try to, of course, have a decision by 3:30, 4 o'clock each day so they can be communicated on the news. That has been our plan. We did that on Sunday, Monday, and of course, today as well. And so we've been working, because again, we want to give the city as much time to make the repairs as possible before we make a decision that might be premature. So again, we are seeing progress, and our goal, again, is to return to school because the days have to be made up. That's not an option. And so we want to return, and we're making every effort. Each and every day, when we sit down with the team, our goal is, how can we return to school? And that's our goal.
My question also would be about making up of those days, and I know that we already have built into the calendar the Friday and the Monday surrounding Easter, but now we have a third day. And what our plan is for that, I know parents are very interested to know when they can find that out. And it's also my understanding that there is some possibility that the governor could declare a state of emergency. And if that was the case, what would, that might impact whether or not we had to make up those days.
I think with that, you know, there's, you know, information. I don't have the facts on that. There's some information that, you know, some things that we've heard, but I think that would be a conversation that we would need to explore to get factual information as it relates to that process. And we are in conversation with the mayor's office, but again, I think that we will explore that as an option. But the makeup days, what the law says is that the days have to be made up. After four days, you have the flexibility to add hours to the day, but before that, you have to make the days up individually. And so we do have two inclement weather days built into the calendar. We, of course, will work with the board and the community as we look at ways to make up the days that are not built into the inclement weather calendar already. So we've definitely talked about some scenarios and, again, but we do need the support of the community because this is, this is something that is required by law that we make the days up.
Just a clarifying question. So it's state law. After four days, we can add hours to the day?
After, after four days, and help me from, after four days, well, I guess on the, for the fifth day, you could use hours, you could add hours to the school day.
Is that to make up day five on, or can you do that to make up the first four days as well?
Well, that, I would need to get some clarity. I think it's, it's the fifth day, I think. But we could, we could get clarity on that.
There's much information you can get on that as regards the law and how we might approach the state to see what our options are there. That'd be very helpful, and the sooner the better.
Well, again, well, in the spirit of just wanting to be transparent and explain to our community exactly what's going on. Again, we are hopeful that conditions will improve the weather. It's supposed to be much better over the next couple of days, so we're hopeful that we can get back to school.
One more. So earlier, we did hear from a parent about extending the class day, extending the school year, Saturday school, digital learning. Could you just comment on, it was helpful to hear day five is, that's good clarification. Are there other things to take into consideration for those others? There's obviously a testing schedule too, and we want as much instruction time as possible.
There are some, there are some concerns with some of those issues. Of course, extending the year becomes an issue for graduation. You know, of course, you have to, you know, we just recently, the board approved the change in graduation because of not having enough days, and then the facilities becomes an issue as well. So extending the day, it's not impossible, but it does bring in other variables. The digital learning, the access has to be available for all students. And so with that, we'd have to, you know, look at ways to possibly make that access available. So again, that's, everything is an option, but we'd have to work very closely with MDE to see if that is even a possibility. Extending the day is a possibility. We, there's a precedent for this. A few years ago, we missed, I think, seven days because of a similar situation, and there was a, we made days up in a myriad ways. We came on Saturday, we, I think Memorial Day, we had, we extended the day. So there were several different strategies that were employed to make the days up. And so again, we will, most importantly, we will be transparent, and we will work with our teachers and with our community, and of course, board approval to put the mechanism in place that will ensure that our students have 180 days that are required.
Thank you.
Okay, that is the superintendent's report.
Right. Under announcements, the board has two announcements to make. One is that we, as a board, will schedule work sessions with the Mississippi Department of Education, who have graciously extended themselves to us such that they will be able to provide expertise regarding the Department of Education state accreditation requirement. So the board will be fully up to speed on the process and procedures and the law. And I think that'd be very helpful as we continue our school board training that we know we're all going to complete by our spring deadline for our new board members. But we also want to get as much information as we can so we can support our interim superintendent. The second announcement that the board would like to make is that we will begin immediately for a search for a full-time superintendent. The board will post a request for proposals for an external consultant support to support the board in the conduct of the new superintendent search. We do have a regularly scheduled board meeting next Tuesday, and we'll have more information as regards our process at that next meeting. But please be advised that we will definitely seek input from our teachers and staff, our principals, our parents and families in the district as we move forward with a full-time superintendent search. So those are two announcements from the board. Item eight, information-only items. Are there, I see none on the agenda. Item nine, information-action items. Dr. Murray?
The administration is requesting the approval of corrective action plan. The corrective action plan is, there's a requirement that the corrective action plan be approved by the board, and we've conducted work sessions, and each of our meetings, we've discussed the cap in detail. But at this time, we are submitting the corrective action plan for approval of the board prior to our submission this, at the end of this week to MDE. So are there, we are available for any questions relative to that request.
The board has received your revised cap, the January 4th review, and I think a January 8th review as well. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? As you think of your questions or comments, we do want to express our appreciation to Dr. Marion, Dr. Merritt and his team for working so hard to get our corrective action plan in place and ready for approval by the state. Do we have any questions or comments for them at this time?
I know that the corrective action plan is technically due January 16th, so next week. Do we anticipate any minor changes between now and then, or is the version you gave to us, the final version, that will be submitted, and are we ready to submit it?
Yes. We, the plan is in its final state, and we're ready for submission.
I think most of them have been answered. The timeline that was submitted, so that's the timeline for requesting the clearance of standards. And I guess I would just ask, as we submit requests, if those could just be part of the board materials, the board packet, so we know that we can check against the timeline.
Yeah. And we'll continue to provide a board update at every board meeting. And so as a part of that, that update, cap update, all of the, all of our submissions to MDE for requests for clearance, we'll provide that information. And again, there are, we did ask in our conversation today if we could receive timelines at exact dates, and there are other districts that are going through the same process, so of course, they could not give us specific days. But if, when we submit a request for clearance, we feel confident that within, you know, a few days or a week or so that someone will be in the space for that clearance. So again, we'll be able to keep you abreast of that process twice a month throughout this process.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Do I hear a motion to approve the corrective action plan as presented by Dr. Murray and his team?
Madam President, I so move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded that we accept the cap plan as presented this evening and uploaded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hear no opposition, the item has been approved. Thank you so much for your work. Item 10, consent agenda items, finance. Ms. Miller?
Thank you, Dr. Harrison, Dr. Murray, board members. Happy New Year. I present to you two items for your approval. Item A is approval of accounts payable and activity fund claims for December 9th through December 22nd, and also item B is approval of the district procurement plan for the child nutrition program.
Thank you. We received your materials in advance. Do I hear questions or concerns from the board? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to accept item A from Ms. Miller, accounts payable through December 22nd, and item B, approval of the district procurement plan for the child nutrition program?
So moved.
Do I hear, second? It's been moved in second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Ms. Miller. The items have been approved by the board. Item 11, consent agenda items general. We have none. Item 12, consent agenda items personnel. Ms. Lyons, approval of staff personnel matters.
Good evening to Dr. Murray, Dr. Harrison, members of the board. The administration asks for the approval of staff personnel matters. It's listed in board material with the correction to A 11, the year should be 2018 instead of 2017. Should be June 18th of 2017.
Thank you. Those corrections would be...
I mean, I'm sorry, should be June 20, June 18th of 2018. I'm sorry.
Now, is, that's on your executive summary?
That's in the staff personnel matters, A 11.
A 11. Okeydoke. Oh, I got you.
Yes.
Thank you. That'll be duly noted with the correct date. Do we hear any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, do we hear a motion to accept Ms. Lyons' staff personnel matters report?
I move that we accept the staff personnel report with the changes that she indicated.
Thank you for that addition. All in favor? Oh, do we need a second? We need a second for that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve agenda item 11A. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the item consent items have been approved for staff personnel matters. Item 13, other business. Hearing none. Item 14, to consider to hold an executive session. Do I hear a motion to hold an executive session?
Consider holding.
To consider holding an executive session?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded to consider holding an executive session. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? It's been moved that we consider holding an executive session. Now, Madam Attorney, that has been approved. Do we need to adjourn and then move into the...
You would close the meeting to discuss whether and for what items you will actually enter into the executive session, and then we'll announce it if you choose to do so.
Okay, so now the...
Dismiss everybody.
Yeah. We ask that the public please be dismissed. Thank you so much.